It's seven o'clock and I'd like to convene the meeting. I will just note for the record that all the councillors are here, so we have a full quorum. And I want to start by asking Jason to say the opening prayer.
Dear God, we come to you today to ask for continued blessing on our community. We ask that you bless this meeting, give guidance to those entrusted and the elected to lead our community, bless those less fortunate in our community, and give peace to those that struggle. We pray this in your blessed name. Amen.
Number three in the agenda is a motion to approve the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Okay.
Second one. One in favor?
Aye.
Number four is approval of minutes of previous council meetings, plural. First is the regular meeting of council, October 12, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve these meetings?
I make the motion to approve the regular council meeting on October 12, 2021.
One in favor?
Aye.
The second one is to approve the minutes of the closed-door meeting of October 25, 2021. I need a motion for that.
I'll move.
One in favor?
Aye.
And the third one is to approve the minutes of the closed-door meeting of November 1, 2021. Motion, please. That one?
I'll make that motion, Your Worship.
I'll second it.
One in favor?
Aye.
Conflict of interest declarations, any conflicts to be declared?
Yes, Your Worship, on 6B with Granite Town Farms. Polly Cox, I would like to leave the room for that, Your Worship.
Okay, so noted. Any other conflict? No. We'll move on. Delegations. Granite Town seniors' delegations, Jim Hanley has sent us a letter that he would be here today to ask us, to make a request on behalf of the seniors, but he sent us his regrets because he's not able to attend today. So I will move on to the second delegation, which is the Granite Town Farms, Ms. Polly Cox, for an update on visitor information center.
Can I take this off? This is okay.
Absolutely, yes.
So, good evening and thank you, council, for letting me be here tonight. Just to fill you in on what happened this summer with the informal visitor information center that we had. Jason came to us this year and said the previous council had decided that they did not want to have a formal visitor information center, they wanted to have more of an informal relationship with that, and that because we had done it in the past, that that was okay if we continued, the signage could stay up and we would have tourists coming to our location. So I was just going to give you a report on that and since that you all are new councillors, just to give you an idea what sort of is involved in the visitor information center and what costs are, what procedures are, just, you know, not long, but enough to kind of give you an idea of what, you know, as you think about next year, what you may want to do. So when I think about the visitor information center and having been in charge of it now since we took over, it's probably been six summers. The way I see it, there are some provincial guidelines, but basically when you have a visitor information center, you have a dedicated space, you have dedicated staff, you have restrooms, and you have, like, you, like, all the time is covered, such as holidays and weekends. So for us, the dedicated space was behind our garage door. That worked very well, we could open the garage door, we had places for the brochures. It was very obvious when people walked up that that's where they would go. And as anyone who has a business knows, space is a premium. So this year, not having an official VIC was kind of nice, we used that space for ourselves. So we did not have a dedicated space this year. We, you know, in the store or around or outside, you know, we were able to still service and give information. We had a desk at the, you know, we have two different desks in the store, and we also have outside, so, you know, we, we just did it a little less formally. That was a little bit more confusing for people to walk in and wonder why the visitor information center had chainsaws. But that was, you know, that was interesting, but we still did that and, you know, we still, we directed them, you know, well, we have our stuff over here, we gave them the information, but we didn't have kind of that formal space because it wasn't rented by the town and it gave us the chance to use it. But it was, it would be going forward, I think, a little bit nicer for there to be a dedicated space. The other thing is the dedicated staff. When you have a visitor information center, you have to be prepared to greet the customers, greet the tourists, and be able to provide what they need, answer their questions, direct them where they need to go. What I found is having an informal visitor information center meant nothing to the public. When the public arrived to our location, they did expect it to be a regular visitor information center, and we ran it basically the way we have in the past with the, you know, with the absence of the dedicated space. So we pretty much, you know, had to be there for them, we had to answer their questions. And because it wasn't as busy this summer, it wasn't so bad, but I still did hire two students, I still had to have some extra staff because it was just too busy. You know, people would come, they would be waiting, you don't want people to leave not being helped, and we did help, I think, most of the people that came. I don't think, I only remember one time when there were just, you know, too many people there that we couldn't help them, but that could happen in a regular year anyway, and they wandered around, looked at the, you know, looked at the gorge and things like that. So I don't think it was, you know, it wasn't a terrible experience, but still, there's a lot of people and you need an extra, you need extra people, and I did have extra people, which is important. You know, the two students were great, they were very helpful, and it was still, it was still really, really nice to see people come from away. The first time I saw someone from the States, like, the first year that we went through COVID, like, someone came from away and we were all like, you know, as if they had the plague, we didn't know if they had the plague. And this year, I was just like so excited to see people from away, the people from the States. We didn't have anyone from outside of North America, but we did start seeing people from the United States, of course, Ontario, Quebec, these people we haven't seen, you know, since before COVID started. And they are, there are a lot of people that come to St. George and people from all over the world come to St. George. It's very, very interesting. So the dedicated space, the dedicated staff, then you need washrooms. I had considered not opening the washrooms this year. You have to clean them, you have to look after them. With COVID, there's more work to the washrooms, and I considered that, but then again, people come to a visitor information center, they expect washrooms, so we had washrooms. So that was, so we did that. And then the other thing is the, you know, the length of time that you're open seven days a week. We did not open seven days a week. We had the freedom to close on weekends and holidays. We closed, we kept our regular business hours. And that was because it was just, you know, there aren't a lot of, there, you know, and especially when we have less tourists, there aren't that many people, but because we didn't have a contract, it was just easier, you know, to be able, not to have to worry about staffing on the holidays and weekends, so we did not. So what we did is we, we had the bathrooms and we did have extra staff, I did end up having extra staff to look after everyone. And when you think about the costs of running a visitor information center, probably the highest cost is the labor. We did get Canada Summer Jobs funding for our two students, that covered. Well, I guess after, after that was finished, it was $193 a week for the students. And so over the course of eight weeks, and Canada Summer Jobs does provide eight weeks of funding, typically it's 50% of minimum wage. In the previous contract that was given, the wage for the student was a dollar over minimum wage, and I did do that this year. I paid them the same as I had previously, I paid them a dollar over minimum wage. So over the course of the eight weeks that we had the students and the Canada Summer Jobs, it cost $1,500 for the students. And then there was some extra staffing after that, the students don't like to work in, you know, obviously they're going to school, so toward the end of the summer, they finish their, their time, they don't want to do any extra, and then, so we had to have extra staff to cover. For a little while, it wasn't as busy, but going into September, it was busy, so there was another, you know, additional $2,400, if you think about it, for staffing. And the things that we provide, the things that a visitor information center does provide are things like the printer. We printed off lots of information for people, ferry schedules, directions to places, the bathroom, they use the bathroom, like, you've got the hot water expenses, the cleaning expenses, things like that. You have the extra wear and tear on the driveway, like, little things, lots of little things that can add up to the cost. This year, it was an interesting year to see what it was like to have a visitor information center without a contract. We did have provincial signs up right after Jason came, they put a new sign up. And so understanding that people come expecting, you know, the full service, my recommendation to the town would be that you do have a formal arrangement with someone, that you do tender it out next year. You know, I, I'm not, you know, I, I think it should be a fair process, someone else may do it better than we do. I think that we've done a good job at it, but I do think the council needs to have a little bit more of an official, structured, you know, relationship with the visitor information center. I think the value that we provided last year was probably around $6,000 to the town for the things that we did and, you know, the staffing and, you know, we have Wi-Fi, we have public Wi-Fi, we have, we use the phones for people, there were lots of various things that we did, and it was a good year. And I would say, based on the tally that we had, there were about 399 visits. It was very slow, June was basically not a tourist month, July it began to pick up, we started to see people from across Canada, then starting in August, we started seeing some, you know, people from the States. So overall, it was, I think, a good year. It's fun to tell people about our region, we have, people come and they just say, "It's a beautiful place, I didn't know how wonderful it was," or they've come back from, you know, past visit. So it's a, it's a great opportunity to tell people about St. George and our area. And anyway, I think that covers what I had to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, please? Thank you. Thank you.
Motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to pay.
Yeah, it's a motion to pay.
Oh, you're making a motion?
Yes, I am. $6,000, which is requested.
She mentioned to, 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 for us to, like, put it on tenure.
Yes, but she's already, she's already spent that.
Yeah.
She's, that, that was her, those were, those were, yes. Will she come back up and we can ask her that again?
Polly, could we ask you a question?
Yes, Your Majesty.
You said your expenses for this past year was around $6,000, is that correct?
That's the, I'd say that's the value that we gave to the town.
Okay, thank you very much. Now you make your motion. You put your motion in form?
I'll make the motion, that we paid the $6,000 for the service.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So we have a motion and it has been seconded. Questions?
You all agree?
I have a question. Is it possible if you can actually provide us a statement of, of the services that you have done so we can actually use it against the $6,000 that the motion is to accept pay just for our auditors and all the rest to be taken?
Are you talking about the invoice, perhaps?
No, she itemized, she itemized a number of expenses that, that added up to $6,000, so if, if, if there is a motion to compensate, to compensate for these expenses, so I, I just want to see if we can actually have something for the records of the town. Okay? And she, and she agreed. Okay, so we have a motion that has been seconded, there are no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
So the motion has been passed.
Brenda.
Ah, there's Brenda.
Oh, good about you.
We are moving on to the section seven of general reports, and we start with the general government report. Jason?
Thank you, Your Worship. General government report, this time of the year is budget time, staffs are spending the last couple of weeks with finalizing the budget numbers for 2022. The lower bridge sewage line installation work, we're still awaiting some information from the vendor installer, some questions that was posed to us from DTI to fix the sewage main on that, on that bridge. Veterans banners, all the additional banners were finally installed last week, so there was some late additions that were installed last, last week. Winterizing public works continues to prepare for winter operations with equipment repairs and, and installation. Canal Beach, Silk Steven has finally put out some invites for contractors for the beach work, it's going to be done in three parts, construction was previously scheduled to start in October. Well number two, gas tax fund top-up for this year is now in and ordering of items to take place to upgrade well number two. Well number four, replacement pump had failed and was replaced, and start working out some electronic, some issues with, with well number four. Some repairs being done at McAdavick Place with a smaller meeting room after the removal of the service window in the kitchen, and also some painting in the downstairs basement area as well in the coming months. Town staff and staff from the planning with the Service Commission are continuing to work on a municipal plan. Documents and drafts will be coming to council in the coming months. Tendering of audit, audit services, tender close December, is going to be closing on December 3, and go to council for December's meeting. Stormwater work in November, we plan to complete stormwater drainage, work on the western end of Prince William Street, so there's a storm, some stormwater issues there up in the subdivision. Public Works Bay, we're going to be updating some insulation around one of the great, the Bay grad stores. We have submitted an application, RDC, for new computers and tables for the library. And just a reminder on some events, we're planning to have our special meeting of council November 15 for the budget presentation. That's all I have, Your Worship.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. One is on the lower bridge sewage line installation, does they give any kind of a, an idea when they might start that? It's, we're coming in November now, we approved this a while ago. What, what is the exact issue that's, that's kind of stalling this?
DTI has some questions for the installer, so we've taken those questions back to the installer and they've, they've just not gotten back to us. So the delay is on the installer's end.
The speed radar sign, are we getting any stats on that?
Yep, we do, we can log into it directly. Yep.
Can we share?
Yep, I can pull that and send that report to council, definitely.
Okay. Okay, that's it for there.
Thank you. If there are no any other questions, we should move to approve the report, right?
It doesn't need to be approved.
There don't need to be approved, okay?
No.
EMO status update. Jason?
Thank you, Your Worship. As of today, there are 473 active cases with 15 cases being hospitalization, 121 deaths in New Brunswick, 92.9% of the population received their first dose with 85.9% receiving second dose. Town is working with Horizon on having a booster clinic in town, and as a reminder for residents, though, the border, land border has been reopened to non-essential travel, however, those re-entering Canada must show proof of a PCR test in the last 72 hours. So that's all I have, Your Worship.
I have a question with regard to the boosters. Do you know where this is planned to be done?
They were looking at using McAdavick Place, but with the strike right now, it's been postponed.
So if there are no more questions, I'm going to move to the fire report and Chief can give us an update.
I guess before I ask for any questions or highlight my report, I just want to add that we did a fair bit of maintenance work on the, the trucks, they had to go through motor vehicle inspection, and of course, while we have them up there, we, we look after a few other things that might be, might be in need of some work. I do have to take 453 back one more time. There was a couple of things that I had, didn't have time to get done the last time I had it up there. So what, what happened is I scheduled the truck to be in St. Stephen for the day and I take it up with me in the morning and bring it back with me at night. So I've got to schedule one more day for that truck to get that up, and then they'll be good for, for this year, hopefully. Also, I've been working with Jason a little bit on, on the budget for, for next year, which is, I guess, sort of reflected in this report. So in October, it was, it was a slow month as far as the number of responses, we were down to just five, I think we're well up over that again already for November. Training, not a lot going on, we're, we're kind of with COVID restrictions right now, we're, we're keeping that to a minimum, and it's not the time of year where we do a lot of training. Hunting season, people are getting ready for winter and all that good stuff. You will note, and I've mentioned it the last couple of reports that we're getting into the, into that third and last quarter, so it's time to, to start purchasing the things that we buy every year, radios, pagers, foam boots, gloves, goods, yeah, and that stuff, that's all stuff we buy every year. We are looking to replace an old oxygen trauma kit for, for doing first aid, and we're getting a bunch of our, our hose recoupled. That was a project we started last year, we bought the couplings, I think, last year, and, but the machine, it's a specialized machine that we use to put the couplings back on the hose. We have one at St. Stephen, but it, it got broken, it was fairly costly to replace, so it, it took me a little while to get that replaced, but we're up and going again now, so I hope by the end of the year to have all of that hose back into service on one of our trucks. And the last thing I, I mentioned, we'll have to wait and see where the budget comes in, but I think, based on what I've spent here and anticipate needing to spend before the end of the year, there should be some, some money left in equipment and some of the other lines that potentially we could spend unless it's needed somewhere else on some TMI equipment to kind of boost up that, that seed cash that they were going to give us. We had talked about in other meetings it wasn't going to quite be enough, and we wondered what we would do, so I, I think, I think, and we'll have to look a little closer, but there might be some dollars available to, to do that, maybe one or two radios, and that would be enough to help, help manage, I guess, a little better coming into the new year. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
Yes, just to make sure that you can, like, if you have surplus on your budget and you want to use it for, for the radios, we should be able, we should be giving, giving you an approval, like, now is November. So do you need anything from us to actually proceed with this, this purchase?
Well, I think as long as there's, there's money within the equipment budget, I think with Jason's approval, we can do that.
Okay, okay.
If we're going to, say, take it out of another line, non-equipment related, then I think we bring, ask, ask your permission to do that, but I, I think we'll come back next month with a definitive recommendation, one way or the other, on what we're going to do, or hope to anyways. But yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chief Martin.
All right, thank you.
Building and planning report, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Your Worship. So as Jason mentioned, the Service Commission will be available next month if it, council so desires, to be able to present a background, background study on the municipal plan. So this is a somewhat lengthy document, but goes through all the issues facing municipality and some of the opportunities and some of the constraints which are identified and potential solutions for those. In local planning, or current planning, rather, we met with the town CEO, with the developer on a potential housing development, it would require rezoning if we were to proceed. It may be something that can be publicly, publicly presented to council at the next council meeting. So this would require rezoning of land, and we would write a planning report to council for your consideration. Currently, we're also researching some best practices on transportation planning, so we feel that these are going to be useful for some of the town of St. George's planning bylaws that are going to be needing updates after the municipal plan and during. In terms of development, as we've mentioned before, this has been a very good year for development for St. George. Total, total building permit construction value is 14.7 million, that's 22 permits to date. There's four of those are new in the report period since last time I presented to council, and the, the value of those four was just over $300,000. In addition to building permits, there are development permits, which are permits for zoning compliance, and these are separate, separate structures which are not the same as the building permit structures, and these also have high value in total this year, 1.6 million in value, and just one of those is new from this report period. We also have one new subdivision plan approved in the report period, so it brings the total to three, three new subdivisions. So that concludes my report, thank you.
I have a question, this transportation plan, can you just give us a bit about what it's about?
Sure. So with transportation, there's a couple of things which we will advise council on when it comes to, say, a new subdivision proposal. When there is a new public road being proposed, we have to give you advice on its suitability to the town and its needs, and emergency vehicle access, and suitability on width, length, and turning radiuses and whatnot. So we use fairly standard, standard documents for reference that are, that are used in the Department of Transportation for reference, but Miss Palace can also go a little bit beyond that if they so choose. So we're looking at different options that also take a lot more consideration of cyclists and pedestrians, whereas most conventional standards are primarily auto-oriented. So St. George has an opportunity to look at some, some of these and bringing in some standards that are more, thinking about the right way for all users as opposed to just the car. So that's kind of where that's going and what we're thinking about, but of course, it's council's decision to implement those and through either municipal plan or through the subdivision bylaw, for example, but we'll present those to you as well.
Thank you, thank you. No questions? Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Your Worship. Water and Sewer Report for the month of October. Average daily water consumption for October is not available at the time of the report. There was no total E. coli and coliform reported. Well levels are low, especially at well number four. New siding on well number two has been completed, we can do the roof when we remove the pump from the current well and fit it in. A water audit was held in the 13th of October by the Department of Environment. This is the first in about three years. A recurring deficiency in our water operations is to have a water tower maintenance plan updated to include the new water tower and remove the old one. We have engaged with engineers at CBCL for this plan since the new water tower entered service in 2016 and have not received one. A new well pump has, has been installed as of, on November the 3rd at well number four. We have been working on the SCADA system with ShadCom to make the data capture more accurately. The power from the unit at the town office has been changed to put on a battery pack backup system so we don't lose our display in any outage. We have also added more eyes on the system by adding a pressure switch at number four, and a standby generator has been scheduled for repair, circuit board was gone, and we Our circuit board was gone and we currently move the battery charger to the generator itself, so if we move it, everything goes with it. The crew completed their natural gas awareness training, the 6th of the month. One of the sewage pumps in the Marsh Lane lift station has been sent away for repair. One from the Latite Road Station number four was recently repaired as well. And the report includes the results for any of the testing that was done in October. So I'll have you worship.
Thank you.
Can I ask why it's taken CBCL five years to come up with a plan?
Worship had the answer for that. Yeah. Guess it's just, it's not for the lack of trying. We've certainly asked.
I meant CBCL, not you.
Yes, yep.
That was my question too. Why is it so slow?
Yeah.
This is pretty important, right?
Pardon?
This is pretty important to have a plan.
It is part of your certification, yes. Yeah. We've gone around other routes to go to the builder of the tower themselves to get a maintenance plan. However, it needs to be stamped by a New Brunswick engineer, so we had to go back to the drawing board. So we thought we actually had a good plan to get a maintenance plan, however, it needs to go back to engineering.
Do we have a report as to why our water levels are low?
Usually with well number four, it goes to what the water levels are at Lake Otopia. So this time of the year, usually it will go low.
Okay, so it's a traditional cycle?
It is. It's getting, it is getting more and more difficult to refill that well just because there's a marsh there that has seen lots of growth now. The water level's been held so low at the lake that marshes, there's less water in that marsh now. So there is certainly a concern there. We have had some talks with Irving about trying to do some trenching in the marsh with Ducks Unlimited, so certainly it is a concern.
The trenching that you mentioned has been proposed a couple of months ago, right?
Yeah, we've talked with Irving. Again, it's going to come down to whether, you know, who's going to pay for the work and, you know, who does the work. Ducks Unlimited used to do it, but now it's trying to find a vendor that actually does this type of trenching. It's like a zigzag shape instead of just going in and trenching out of the marsh, so.
Any other questions? Transportation report.
Thank you, Worship. The veterans banners have been put up along with remembrance flags at the post office and the civic center. Ashfall work included the area on Main Street East and Brunswick Street as well as two manhole adjustments on Latite Road. We finished patching on South and McAdavic Drive, yeah, Solar Court and Manor Road. Water was shut off at the cemetery and the garden for the winter. We will bring the flower pots in as soon as possible and store it. We are getting prices on guard rail repair to the damage on Little Lane. Three guard rail posts were replaced on South Street, and I'll just add to that. That's a, that is an assurance claim for the driver. A three-ton, the three-ton and the two-ton were undercoated and the dump body painted on the three-ton. The three-ton also had emission warranty work done in St. John. Some playground equipment was taken in St. George Elementary School. Crosswalk signs were moved to closer to the crosswalk themselves. Additional signage will be installed and updated. Floats at the canal and Day Adventure Center were taken out for the season. Some loom and seeding was done in various spots. Leaves are being collected as time allows. And the rink house here up at McAdavic Drive was removed and the power disconnected. So I'll have you worship.
Thank you. Questions? No questions, so we'll move on to item number eight, bills paid and payable in principle to October 31st, 2021, in the amount of $120,035. You want to introduce or do I go to questions? Everybody has the bills? Do you want to actually ask questions?
No, no.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, you want to actually say anything matter in the report? No. So questions? The floor is open for questions.
The company that did the ash fall, are they going to fix some of the spots in the spring that they left a mess?
Where was the mess?
Like the White Dennis Hall's place that when they didn't finish it off properly?
The uneven ground, it would have to be removed and pulled back out. We've had a discussion with them. We haven't heard anything back.
So they are going to fix it, then?
They have not said yes or no.
Okay.
Can I ask a question around, it's probably just me, really. It's on page one of seven and then we turn again on four of seven under the utility fund. It's okay to ask of these questions in this financial?
Absolutely.
Yep. It seems to me that there's a double posting of the same amounts. Number 65110, but it says 65110 here as well. It was budgeted, doesn't seem to be used, it hasn't even used at all. I just wondered why it's in twice.
Perhaps, was it a credit in a debit, was it?
No, doesn't appear to be.
What was it for?
It's for the administration water wages.
Okay. So that's, that is, that's a salary that comes, it comes out of our general fund and that goes through our utility fund. So there is a deduction within the general.
But they're both in utility fund. And they're, and we haven't used any of it. The fiscal year to date is zero.
That's right. We do that at the end of the year. We'll move salaries over to the end of the year, utility fund.
But my question really is, why is it in twice?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that. Most of the time, it will be one lump sum.
Yeah.
So it could have been two sums, but I'll.
No, everything is identical except for it's listed, it's posted twice.
That's utility, okay.
I also have some questions around the utility income, around the residential and the industrial. Maybe, again, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it looks like we have $83,425 owing to us?
Outstanding. That would be about right for this year.
Outstanding, yeah. In the industrial and we still have 2,356 in residential?
Yep.
Now, any of those residential, are 90 days or over?
Yes, there would be, some from earlier. Yes, that would be the July billing.
Okay. So how long are we going to leave this go?
So we have water shut offs in April and September. Those are final billings.
So they get to, okay.
We don't charge interest or anything.
Now, historically, on the industrial, that'll clear itself up?
It will.
Okay.
We've tried interest in the past to speed up that process and fortunately didn't work.
Okay.
Any other question?
No, I'm good.
Any other questions? So if there are no other questions, I would move for a motion to approve the bills paid and payable in principle for $120,035. Voted?
Hold on a second.
Okay, on the table?
Aye.
We are moving to item nine, committees of the town. This is a subject who has been brought before. I just want to introduce it for a minute before I open it up for further discussion. We all have received some time ago a committee descriptions draft that described the mandate and identify individuals who had been, who have volunteered to join these committees. So the question came up that we may need, the committees have been approved, but the mandates have not been approved. So this is an opportunity to actually do any modification to the mandates that you feel appropriate and also to discuss a second part which relates to something that our lawyer has identified that we may need to add to our bylaw with regards to the number of times that these things need to be met or how, what's the maximum number of counselors that may be attending one of these committees, some legalistic things which the town lawyer found that they are appropriate to be, to be done. So I have in front of us the committee descriptions. I'm going to ask Jason if he has any suggestion about how to proceed with regards to this part of the agenda. I would have proposed to actually hear questions or motions related with changes and discuss them and vote on them so we can clear the mandates and move forward. Everybody agrees with this approach? Can I have a motion to discuss and approve the mandates?
I approve to discuss the mandates.
We introduced this topic in the agenda after consultation with all the counselors so we'll be able to resolve a reason for which advisory committee work has stalled after receiving notice from our lawyer that we need to change a few things.
I do have a question before we go any further.
Yes.
Why did this, why did I not get this draft in my package so that I could review it?
My understanding is that everybody has received this draft months ago. It's exactly the same thing that has been distributed. Let me ask this question. 11/08, is that eight is the month? 11/08 means November 8? Okay. Can I ask, because I'm addressing Mr. McKinnon here, who was the one who drafted and distributed that. Can I ask you, Chris, when this thing has been first sent out to the counselors?
On the bottom right quarter in case 921.
Okay, so that is?
September 21st.
September 21st. So everybody, everybody has received that on September 21st. So I.
And yet, and that is true. However, it was not put on the, it was not put on the agenda in September 21st.
On the agenda, we have, on the agenda, we have the item. Let me read it from you.
It's put on the agenda today, yes.
New business committees of the town. Maybe we can ask our CEO to introduce the subject of this new business.
Mr. Worship, so this was in draft form since September. It's been a topic of, it's been open for discussion through email. Any input was, was open for input. It's been in a draft state until as it is today. So I guess, you know, with it being on the agenda today, if it's council's wishes to approve this committee and the mandates, then that would need a motion. If not, then, so this would go back for further debate.
So essentially, I would like to clarify if the council wishes to table this for another few months or if the council wishes to actually get on with the committee descriptions and mandates so the committees can do some work. So I would like to have a motion on actually, no, on actually continuing with approving these mandates unless there are changes for them. Otherwise, we have to actually table it for reconsideration after another two or three months.
I think that we should table it for this meeting and then maybe discuss it at the December council meeting because there are some questions that need to be answered before we can make a motion to pass this as such. Maybe we don't need as many committees that are here. I can see myself personally, there's two committees that I think can be rolled into one committee, like your volunteering and community support and your parks and recreation. Could that not all be together?
I'm going to ask a deputy mayor who had actually defended the two committees a couple of months ago. Can that thing be consolidated?
It could be consolidated, yeah.
It can be consolidated. So here we have a motion to consolidate the volunteering and community support with the parks and recreation.
That's just my opinion.
No, no, this is a motion. I mean, anybody wants to second it? I mean, Barbara seconded it, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, so all in favor for that?
Aye.
Aye. We also, we also in our discussions talked about perhaps.
Let's clear up this one here, this consolidation. So so far we have one, two. Any other person in favor of this proposal from Council Colton that has been voted so far by one, two, three?
I'll support it, yeah.
Okay, so we have, yeah, okay. So this consolidation has passed of these two committees. Did you have another, another suggestion?
We did have in discussion the number of people on the committee. So what happens now when we consolidate parks, recreation and volunteering together, we have quite a list of individuals. Some of them are, some of them are doubled up, I see, but we, I think we need to make a decision, again, table this for next month, to make a decision on how many people we really want on a committee. Because having nine or more on a committee is really too many.
Just for, just for clarification, this particular example that you brought up has the same people on the counselors, on the council side and it has.
Let's do my eight, I think.
It has Cynthia, Christine, Brooke.
There's nine altogether.
No, they're not nine, they're, they're less, they're less, they're. There are five public representations in the committee. Does anyone suggest that five are too many in a committee for?
It's a big committee for nine, to have nine on it.
No, it's five from the public, five from the public. I mean.
I think what needs to be determined is how many council representations that each committee will have in addition to public representation. So that should be discussed, I think, for the next meeting.
Yes.
I don't believe that any council was forced to be in the committee. People have volunteered. The whole idea behind a committee is people have an interest to volunteer for a certain thing. The question is, is there any inherent limit that we should, that we, right now is considered?
It just seems a big number for a committee. That's why I think we should.
So is seven people a big number for the committee? The only thing for which I'm making a point is there are some urgent issues where we need the input of these committees to actually move on. The Christmas activities is one. The, some of the issues related with plants for the spring is another one. So I am personally trying to have the committees working while we are resolving some bigger issues. So my specific question is, are seven people too many?
There's nine on McAdavian, I think it's too many.
Four counselors and five members of the public.
Okay, so is there any council who wants to actually drop out? Okay, so is there any councillor who wants to actually drop out?
I don't want to drop out.
Okay, so we're all.
Well, you're on every one of them, Mr. Mayor.
By law. I, I, I did not, I did not, I did not, I did not volunteer for that. The bylaw calls for the mayor to be part of every committee, and that's why my name is in every one of them. So that's the reason, that's the only reason. Otherwise, I have enough of work to do, and that's why I want to have some volunteers to actually do their work so we can do other things, council things.
Well, we've only added one extra person in the public representation if we combine the volunteering and community support and the parks and recreation because one person is on both committees.
Correct.
So it's only one extra public representation. The council representation is the same on both committees.
Correct.
So if we could just go on to this.
Actually, frankly, my, the only committee which I believe has some urgency.
Is this one.
Is this one, yes.
Yeah, and we've already decided.
So I would have, I would have liked to actually have it working while we resolve the bigger questions. So we can table the thing, but we can leave a note to, to, to the C E O that this particular consolidated committee should continue its work because there are urgent things to be decided.
I'd really do it on Wednesday.
Everybody agrees with that? Okay, so we have a motion to actually continue with this consolidated committee and a motion to move the committee things for the December meeting. Seconded?
I seconded.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye. It's eleven o'clock.
B I A, Business Improvement Area. I'm going to ask Jason to introduce the subject and then we can actually see what.
Your worship, so this would be for the, the Business Improvement Area. So we have two bylaws with the Business Improvement Bylaw and the Business Improvement Levy Bylaw. Both of these give the authorization or the authority for the province to collect two cent levy on, on, on property that's identified as the B I A area, Business Improvement Area. So that's areas, that's, properties in the, in the Main Street downtown area. So as of right now, two cents is being collected with, with those properties. There is no active B I A. They have yet to submit a budget or even a list of officers. So we are required from the province when we, when we submit our budgets this year to ensure that we are saying that there is an active B I A and for the year of 2021, there's not been an active B I A. So we've done some surveys, we've sent letters this year to gauge if there's any interest to continue the B I A. We've got three respondents, and only one of those was in favor of keeping the B I A going. The other two were, were not really so much in favor. So we've had really just one person in favor of continuing the B I A. So, so what we would need to do if we're going to continue the B I A, we would need to see a list of officers. One person that's saying that they want to keep it going, that would certainly not be enough to, to form officers and a president, a treasurer, and a secretary. So council would need to, if, if the interest is not there for the B I A, we would have to repeal those two bylaws to remove them. As of right now, and the two cents is being collected, it's almost like a double tax for those businesses. So we've been doing that since 1983. There's been some years where a B I A has been very productive. We've, you know, some things like the town logo came from B I A initiatives, Main Street beautification projects, but seeing no B I A now, we certainly couldn't submit to the province and say there's an active one to go ahead in 2022 to collect that other two cents. So this is not something that goes away forever. If suddenly there's a bunch of businesses that want to bring this back, we would just reopen those bylaws and we would just re-initiate those bylaws. But certainly if it's council's wishes to collect that two cents, we'd have to have an active, active group. So I guess, you know, going forward, we need to, we need to repeal those two bylaws.
It has been suggested by some residents that practice in other, in other municipalities, Charlotte County was to actually give to the B I A members certain money to actually do their own thing for improving their local spot in the town. There is a requirement by, by, by the bylaw for that money to be transferred to a third party? Can that thing, can that thing be administered by the town for the purpose of the Business Improvement Area?
So if, if the B I A is dissolved through the repeal, any funds that would be held in the B I A would come back to the town, which would then have to be earmarked for, you know, that, that area beautification. So the main purpose of the collection was for business improvement, for, for improvements to the B I A area. So it would be used for the downtown area. So that's what we'd have to use the funds for. So, so they'd have to, they'd have to be used earmarked just for that.
So can we, can we continue collecting that for the purpose of earmarking it for the B I A area?
No, no. So the B I A would have to, it governs itself through, through its own list of, its own officers and through its, through its own budgeting. We cannot facilitate a meeting or anything like that that has to be done by them. So, yeah, we, we can't even submit like a budget for them. They has to be, it has to be free and clear of the town.
So you are asking the council to put in dormancy two bylaws essentially?
Yes.
Is that, is that something that's legal?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
We can actually set up two bylaws dormant?
We'd have to repeal them.
Or repeal them?
Yeah, we repeal them.
Or we repeal them? We repeal them. And the process for repealing bylaws is one that has multiple readings and?
No, no, it's just.
It's just a motion, you can actually sweep the bylaw off the thing.
Yes.
So it takes three readings to be introduced by, it can be swept, single sweep? Interesting.
So worship, just, just to add to that too, and I guess what the idea would be was we'd bring this back to council in December and for repeal of the B I A.
So there is some additional research to be done or to actually consolidate the positions of whether B I A exists or not?
No, we can certainly do that tonight if, if it is council's wishes to make a motion tonight to repeal the bylaw for the B I A and then the bylaw for the B I A levy, we can certainly do that too.
I think I'm a little curious as to why it just, did it suddenly just dissolve or was it, like, the last time that I was involved with the B I A, Andrea Mason was the, was involved and Sarah Sparks, so they're not, they're just, nobody's just interested?
No one's interested, no.
It just seems really strange.
Yeah. And we've sent letters and surveys and it's been really no, like I said, three, we've had three responses, one positive, that's it.
Well, if there's no interest in the local business on the front street, I'd like to make a motion to repeal the bylaw because why collect money from businesses that isn't being used for those businesses and you don't have the B I A in force right now? And why not give the businesses a little break? And the money that's there, give it back to the businesses or beautification of the front street? That's just my opinion.
Motion. Yeah, motion. So it'd be, I'd need two motions. I need a motion to repeal.
We have a second motion, so they.
Same second.
Yeah, same second. So are there any questions?
Your worship, just to clarify, this would be one motion to, to repeal the, the Business Improvement Area, and then I'd need a second motion to repeal the, the Business Improvement Levy, two, two motions.
So can we, can we consolidate in one motion or maybe two?
Typically, when you're dealing with bylaws, two separate motions.
Okay, so.
Do we have the bylaw numbers?
I don't, no, no. We only have the two, so.
Say again?
We only have the two, so.
Okay. So the first, the first bylaw is to actually, that we are repealing today is the one that repeals the requirement of the B I A or the existence of the B I A. Okay? And. Seconded? And, and questions? There are no questions, so all in favor?
So the second part then?
I'll move that we repeal the levy then.
Yes.
Correct. So the second, the second motion is a motion to repeal the levy that has been raised for the B I A purpose. And I'm going to give a minute to, to the C E O to consult.
So just to clarify that, yes, the B I A's, B I, Business B I A bylaw is bylaw number twenty-nine, and this would be for thirty-one, the levy.
Okay, so right now we are, we are, the motion is to repeal the, the bylaw that prescribes the levy for the B I A, and we have, one has been moved.
It was moved by Barbara, I seconded.
Yeah, and seconded, and questions? No questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, no B I A. Garbage Collection and the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. Do you want to actually introduce the subject, Jason?
Yeah, I could certainly.
Try it, I'm going to add at the end.
So this is, this was brought up through discussion of the town to bring back a recommendation to these service commission to, to look at possibility of the service commission taking over a collection of garbage. Right now, that's done through contracts with not only L S Ds but most of the municipalities, all but one. So the, the thought was that council would bring that back to the service commission to say that there was, there was interest by this council to have the service commission seek out the possibility of, of collecting garbage.
Thank you. I just want to add on that one that Blacks Harbor is already doing it, and the predicament that we may face in about a year is that a current contract with our contractor ends, and the situation is such that the suppliers of garbage collection have shrunk down to almost one. So we are, we are operating in a near monopoly situation, and that can change the pricing very fast without us having possibility. So what I hope that we can achieve today is a motion to actually bring a recommendation to the service commission to actually look at getting into the garbage collection business. They are in the, in the, in the, in the business of waste management, they're operating the dump, so this is a natural extension of, of, of the current thing. So essentially, I would like to have a motion for this council to actually make, to actually make, make a motion to make a recommendation to the service commission.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How much longer is the contract that we have now in effect?
A year?
It would be another two years.
Two years.
Two years?
I mean, if, if, just to, if I can elaborate a bit on your point, if, if we want the service commission to do, they will have to do their own feasibility study and scope if they can or they cannot. And based on the feedback, we may have to actually prepare because normally negotiations for a thing like that, we're going to start maybe in a year time? Like a year before the contract is, you don't, you don't start the month before, before, before. Anyone has any concern about, or any, 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 any comment about making that, that recommendation to the service commission on behalf of the town of St. George? Okay, so can I have a motion to actually make a proposal to, on behalf of the town, to the service commission to actually look at, at the feasibility of getting involved in the waste collection of this town? So can I have a motion for that?
I'll motion it.
Any seconded? Am I allowed to second? I'm, I'm, I'm asking the expert there. Am I allowed to second a motion that is made by a councillor?
You can, but as chair, it's usually.
I will make the motion. And I will, I'm, I'm going to put for questions if anybody has any questions.
I have one question. Do we even know if the N B, Southwest N B Service Commission is interested in this?
We want an answer on that one. That's exactly the purpose for which we are putting it to them. We have a motion, and I'd like to get, to get votes. Who is in favor of this motion? I am in favor of this motion.
You're looking at the proposals to look at the different options?
You have moved on a motion. Are you going to vote for it?
Yes, I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you. So, so I have two in favor. Councillor Allison?
No.
So the motion has been defeated. Update on the Habitat for Humanity Properties?
Mr. Worship, I'd just give an update to, to council. Some questions on the Habitat for Humanity properties that were, basically the town sold the two, two parcels of land on Brunswick Street. This was done back in, sorry, this was done back in the summer of 2020. Purchase and Agreement was that Habitat for Humanity would be trying to place a home on one of the lots by the end of October of this year. So we have been speaking, we have been in communications with the organization, and last communication we had was spring of 2021. I am waiting to have a meeting with them this month as well. And they were, they advised the town that due to pandemic and impacts of the typical arrangement with the community college for building homes, that they would not be able to have a home constructed by the end of October. So we are formalizing an extension to this agreement and have, have a call with the organizations actually this month. In hindsight, at the time of the agreement, the pandemic was underway and was thought the time that the timeline of fourteen to sixteen months may be a little difficult to meet even at that time. But, so just to give background, Habitat for Humanity, they get the homes brought in from the community college, and even as of right now, community colleges with the ongoing strike are just not in session, not on, no, no hands on. So, so they've asked, they've asked for a extension to that agreement, so we are looking
Are there any questions on this new business from the update on the Habitat for Humanity Everybody's happy about the situation? Okay, thank you very much, Jason, for the update. We don't have any old business. I will move on to point eleven, Correspondence, Association of Interior Designers of New
Yes, your worship, just, just correspondence directed to the town. It's the interior design designers of New Brunswick, just to advise that there is a practice, practice act that's, that's been enacted in the province which gives legislation for any certified registered members of interior design. So it was just an F Y I to the different municipalities that there is actually an act that, that basically certifies and registers interior designers. So it's an F Y I.
Okay.
Who knew?
It's nice to know. I suppose that no one can call himself an interior designer without being a member of that association and pay his dues. Thank you. Moving on to item eleven B, Eastern Charlotte Waterways Regarding Project Village Carsharing.
Yes, your worship, letter is well distributed to council from Eastern Charlotte Waterways. Charlotte Waterways, just in regards to their project Village Car Share. Just giving thanks for their, for the towns taking the time to consider working with them. We are certainly continuing to have communication with Eastern Charlotte Waterways and placement of these vehicles. As of right now, there's, there's no plan for this current year or the next, or the next little while to put any cars in town. But they are still, you know, working for potential sites and locations. Certain requirements there of, of making sure that they're monitored and certainly central to town. But just to sort of give thanks for the town for participating with that, that project.
So just for the record, the, the vehicles of the Eastern Charlotte Waterways right now operate in which areas?
We, Blacks Harbor and St. Andrews and St. Stephen.
St. Andrews and St. Stephen. Okay, have any comment, question about this matter? Okay. We are moving into the item 12, Public Presentations and Appearances under bylaw number 80, section 58, which gives members of the public the entitlement to address the council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. And just, just for the logistics, I'd like to know how many people are, are, are here to actually take advantage of the public presentation? One, two, three? I see. Maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay, so we're going to take the thing as a yes, just to actually make sure that we give you the opportunity at the end to actually decide. So how we should do that? Alphabetically?
I think you can answer the right question today.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I'm curious about the committees. I know you've talked about it a fair bit. Where would one get a list of the committees? Or could you tell us what the committees are? Is it on the website?
Excellent question, but I'm not allowed to talk, but it's an excellent question. I, 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 no.
But we have it on the website.
Well, you mentioned a couple of the, the titles, so you must be allowed to, like, or no, we can't?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. That's all, that's all I'm saying. It's an excellent question. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is April McLaughlin.
You can take your mask off, and you're far away from everybody.
You get so used to wearing it now. My name's April McLaughlin, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the councillor from the Granite Town Gardeners for the use of the Macadamdevek. We very much appreciate it. And if you need our help with anything, please feel free to ask.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I understand, yeah, I understand that there have, there have been a first meeting, okay? Yeah. Go ahead. You can have the floor.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jenna Murray. So I just have a question. I'm sure you're not allowed to answer it, but can people from outside of town join your committees?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is, this is any Canadian, I suppose, right, Jason?
So I just want to bring up bylaw number 86. It's a conduct on social media. It's a conduct of all councillors. And in this, it says a councillor means any member of council, including the mayor and deputy mayor. So that conduct was created in February 2020. It was written to prevent the type of embarrassment we are seeing on social media by the mayor. The public is to be dealt with in a responsible manner. The way the trolling is going on on Facebook is not okay. Saying that you have to live within town limits to have an opinion, but yet then we're allowed to join the town committee? Doesn't make any sense. So I just, I'm not sure what St. George would be without its neighboring communities. Can you imagine if Back Bay, Lake Utopia, Penfield did not support LeBlanc's Independent Grocer? Pretty sure if we used just the residents of St. George, he wouldn't stay afloat. You also have budgeted from money from the R S C for the Macadamdevek Center. So this has yet to be approved by the local committee. And it's a regionally focused committee. So I can't imagine them ever approving that money for a town that doesn't want to move forward regionally. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next presentation, please. I'm sorry, is there any other one before? Because I, I thought that would. Okay, go ahead.
If something else, we'll do it shortly.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The only question I had was just with regards to the Y M C A being moving, where they're moving now to St. George Elementary School, and it may not prove to be a sustainable place for them to hold their, their daycare. They're not going to be able to, I'm assuming, do any kind of summer camp in the summer now, that opportunity is going to be gone. So I'm just wondering what council has for plans moving forward to help provide the services that they decided to let go.
Thank you. Any other five-minute presentation?
Okay. Hello, everyone. Tracy Craig. I'm a resident of Lake Utopia and have a business in Opera Letang. And I just want to start first, I guess, with the, regarding the committees. So in an exchange between the mayor and I back in July, I was actually asked to serve on one of those committees. The committees are Economic Development and Balance Population Growth Committee, Volunteering and Community Support Committee, Public Works Committee, Public Safety Committee, Public and Recreation Committee, Municipal Communications and Social Media Committee. To which I responded, of course, thank you, John. I currently serve on the board for the Economic Development of Eastern Charlotte, so I'm sure we will want to have someone from there sit on committees one and five. Also, someone from our Y M C A Advisory Committee will likely sit on five and possibly even two. And I also serve on my L S D Advisory Committee. So not sure I personally will have the time, but I'm excited about the growth for the region, and I continue to be involved on many levels. Some great work has been and continues to be done over the past several years. With your mandate of collaboration being strengthened by these committees, I believe it will help us continue to move our area forward. Thanks again. I'll be sure to share, share the town's information about each committee and help identify those who are willing and able to serve. I then received a response, response, thanks, Tracy. A big part of our challenge as the Greater St. George is to weigh the St. George priorities vis-à-vis the construct of the Eastern Charlotte concept. In these committees, one should bring the Greater St. George hat. This is very important. At this stage, we are soliciting interest from individuals who have a commitment to the Greater St. George area and not from organizations who have a particular interest in our area. I hope you can find some time in the future between our different board, your different board obligations to contribute to the St. George Economic Development Advisory Committee. Best regards, John. I then requested to stop in for a coffee chat because I think perhaps I was a bit confused and could use some clarity. We did have a meeting after that. And so that's a little bit about the committees. The, so this evening, in listening, I was actually a little, I'm like, okay, so Tourism Information Centre is gone from the town. The B I A is gone. The Y M C A is potentially gone. And then we had information about the Consolidation Committee, Recreation and Voluntarism being combined. And what better organization than the Y M C A, whose mandate is volunteering and recreation, to serve? So mayor and council, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that people are tired. I'm concerned that people are ready to stop supporting those who vision, whose vision serves only the few in the town of St. George and not the many surrounding the town that we all call home. I'm concerned that people are ready to stop supporting those who, whose vision stops at the end of their term. People are looking to support those who share a vision of growth and those who share a vision for everyone and for a long time. Those who share a vision for seniors, for children, for roads, for recreation, for all of it. We see that, and we want to help. We don't see that the burden is falling solely on the current mayor and council, nor on the sole, the sole responsibility of the municipality. As the largest municipality in the subregion of Eastern Charlotte, you are a service center to almost 10 times your household count. The community, as evident over the past few weeks, clearly doesn't want you to choose seniors over children. I've sat in on many council meetings where the conversation became roads over recreation, St. George over Eastern Charlotte, a library over a hub. And now an underused building over a global organization that is known for building strong communities. The community that you serve wants you to have it all. We want it all. We want you to lead. We want you to partner. We want you to collaborate with the thousands, thousands around you who shop in your town, who have businesses in your town, whose kids go to school in your town, whose parents live in your town. We want growth. Several of you campaigned on collaboration, on volunteerism, on progress post-pandemic, and yet the opposite seems to be true over the past six months. Instead of engaging with those who have been trying, who have been community leaders for decades to move pre-pandemic projects ahead, instead of trying to partner with those groups and organizations and volunteers who have put in the time and energy and resource into understanding what challenges we are faced with and working together to problem solve? We have consistently heard no. No to all of them. No to Community Development of Eastern Charlotte. No to the Y M C A. No, we think we can do it better, is what we are hearing. Needless time and energy and resources have been spent recreating a wheel that already had momentum and was excited to work with you to put St. George on the provincial map for tourism, for housing, for recreation, and for growth. I personally have applauded you and your desire to have more and want more for your residents. We want more too. And we can have it all, but we must be willing to look beyond the current situation, beyond this term, for the sake of progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you very much. We have to. The statements of the council are coming up, and I always start from the right. Councillor Allison?
I would just like to thank everybody for coming tonight, voicing your opinion. And everything that you said, I will take it under my little hat that I have and try to see what we might be able to, to do for the town. That's my all I have.
There are many challenges the council has to face. Hard decisions, not always popular. Very expensive ones sometimes. Taxpayers have to pay the price. There's only so much money. Decisions have to be made. Not always popular, like I said. Hard decisions to make. We're just a new council. There's many things. Tracy, you talked about the hub. That may come down the road. I hope it does. In regards to the R S C return on this, this area right here, the citizens of the town are going to pay an awful lot of money this year at that 2%. The return is about 30 for us. It's not much, not enough to keep this running. Nowhere's near. Nowhere's near it. That's all I can say.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Clinton?
We're a new council. Give us time to do what we want to do. Don't kill us before we have even had a chance to get out of the starting gates.
These words should not be uttered in these chambers.
Okay. I take back everything I said then.
The kill, just take the kill out. Okay, let's go with Deputy Mayor here.
No, I, I agree. We, we listened, we've listened to everything you have to say, and we've taken it under advisement. And I think it's rather sad that so many things have been said that maybe shouldn't have been said, you know? I'm sure we can all get along and get somewhere and work through this. It's, anyway, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Councillor of the Director, do you have any statement?
I just want to start off and say that the council does support the Y. And we're happy that they were able to find another location that was suitable for them. And we are, our council, I think we are for population growth. That is and does remain to be one of our priorities. It's not a unilateral approach, but it's a very complicated thing. But I believe that we can do our best at it. And that's really much, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, everyone, for coming, and we will take everything that was said here under advisement. Thank you.
And I, I just want to make my closing remarks. I want to thank everybody for coming. There is one matter of privilege that I must address, which is something about a bylaw that the council has passed years ago. This mayor has, has, makes, makes media and town positions that the council is approving, and is doing that through the town. As an individual, he has all the rights and privileges of a Canadian citizen, and he intends to exercise them to its full extent during his, his service for the town and afterwards. Secondly, I would like to, to, to address some, some developments that have been, can I have you quiet, please? In the last, in the last meeting of the, in the last meeting of the Service Commission, there has been a committee being formed for, to address problems with attracting and retaining physicians. And a lot of, I mean, so Stephen has an acute problem with a recent, some recent resignations or, or doctor's quitting. So there is a new committee that's being formed. And hopefully, it will actually seek, seek the input from all the municipalities. I hope to be part of that committee. I have, I have, I have been doing some research myself, and one of the things that I have heard again and again and again from the doctors is the need to have a balance between work and life. And when the system is very stressed, that balance cannot be achieved. So one of the things that I, I'm hoping that we're going to be capturing in the, in the consultations as we move forward is to actually ask the doctors who came, who have been wined and dined and then left, and actually capture from them the fact that they did not find what they want. Not only St. George, but also in, in, in other municipalities who have a lot of recreational facilities like St. Stephen. And I want to actually, I want to actually mention that through the, through the, through the social media interaction last few weeks, I realized that there are many individuals who do not know that this town is crying for volunteers. We had a festival this summer, and a lot of the people around the table had to work until midnight to actually move equipment in and out and, and, and make it happen. So in the, please look at our website. There is a special form to register volunteers. So we'd like to actually get the pool of volunteers being built. So if, if need arises, we can tap on them. And that is my closing statement. And I noticed here that the date of the next regular meeting is December 13. the next regular meeting is December thirteenth at seven o'clock at Macadamdevek Place. Uh, just before Christmas. So you are welcome to come again. I mean, they will have, it's nice to see so many people around. And with that, as the alarm comes, uh, I'm gonna want to have a motion, okay?